Good evening. I'd like to call the business meeting to order. Please stand.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to people represented here. Empowers us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Wingo?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Wen, Ms. Whalen, Mr. Snyder, Ms. Cable?
Here.
Mayor, we do not have a quorum. We will not do the approval at the minute since we do not have a quorum. And we can do discussion on ordinance oh nineteen twenty twenty-five but cannot do an official reading. So, Mr. Hunt, would you like to present?
Are we starting with the check presentation or?
Oh, I skipped over that.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. All right. Would you like to talk to us about the check presentation?
Happy to. And I know Rick's here and he's a much better speaker than I, but as council is aware, over the last two budget cycles, the city has allocated each year approximately fifty thousand dollars out of the opioid funds. Those funds will be sent to the Children's Home of Northern Kentucky. They have a lot of great programming that I'm sure Rick's going to stand up here and explain in more detail. We've been working on this for quite a while. Katie spearheaded the last part of this. And really, what all the time, you know, the main reason this took so long is we had to get an agreement in place for the release of those funds. It'll kind of be drawn down, so they won't get like all the money upfront. They'll have to show the services that were provided, and then there'll be a check issued to Children's Home of Northern Kentucky. So, all of that has been worked through, and we're very happy to finally be at the finish line with this.
And just to note, this is opioid funds, so this is not taxpayer dollars that are coming to us. And there are restrictions as to how those funds can be spent, very limited on how we can spend them. And treatment for substance use disorders is one of the things that we can use those for. And the Children's Home of Northern Kentucky is an excellent provider in that arena. And we're happy that we can have this partnership with them. So, at this time, we have some theatrics maybe. We have members of councils maybe join me down. And Mr. Worth?
So, Mayor, let me just simply say a quick but very sincere thank you to the conversations that you've been a part of. And I just can't tell you how great it has been to work with your staff, with Katie, with Joshua. Children's Home of Northern Kentucky has been serving this area since eighteen eighty. We are not a fly-by-night organization. We have had a major focus on populations that have been dealing with some pretty difficult circumstances since the eighteen eighties. And we remain committed to that. It probably doesn't surprise many of you that one out of every three Kentuckians uses a Kentucky Medicaid card to access health care services. And sometimes those populations have the most barriers in accessing treatment at the right service, at the right time, and at the right place. And it's important for us to make sure those populations are attended to. There's really not a lot of people trying to shove me out of the way and saying that they will take care of these populations. And so, we really do feel that this is part of the mission that we have been fortunate enough to address. There are two fundamental poisons in our groundwater as Kentuckians. And these poisons keep haunting us. And the two poisons that I'm referring to are untreated mental health issues and untreated substance use disorder treatment needs. And if you look time and time again, and I don't know if you're wanting to talk about school attendance issues or workforce development issues, or the numbers of people that are being incarcerated in the Commonwealth, so many times, what has led to those situations are untreated substance use disorder needs and untreated mental health issues. And so, your one hundred thousand dollar investment goes directly to attacking and addressing those two major systemic drivers of so many uglies that we have to deal with here in the Commonwealth. I'll end with a profound thank you, Mayor, and to your entire staff.
Thank you, Rick. Ms. Chambers?
Mr. Worth? First, thank you so much for everything that your organization does. I cannot say enough about your organization and how helpful you've been to my family and my children. I wanted you to know if you would mind speaking to the people at home who might be wondering where to start whenever their children are in need of some help, what the steps they would need to take to reach out to your organization would be. And secondly, if you could please speak to, I know, some of our local schools, including my children's schools. R.A. Jones has had two of the three counselors cut this year. Can you tell us a little bit about how your organization is able to step in and fill that gap?
Yeah, so many times, people really don't know where to turn when they are in an issue that's involving a mental health issue or in need of an assessment or a substance use disorder. And sometimes parents or grandparents know that they're dealing more than just a kid being a kid, that there's something more here, but they just don't know where to go. And so, on that note, Children's Home of Northern Kentucky can be accessed by our website, And if we are not the right answer to the family, we will make sure that you get to the place where you need to be, right? But we offer a wide variety of services ranging from outpatient services. And a lot of those services can happen at schools, or they can happen at home. And if the outpatient services that we offer, and I'm talking about things like partial hospitalization, intensive outpatient programming, one-on-one counseling, if those can't cut it, then we're the only provider in the northern Bluegrass region of the Commonwealth to offer a residential service entitled Psychiatric Residential Treatment Facility Level One Care. And so, we have an entire continuum of care to help our families in need. And so, once again, if you have questions and you need navigation, we have an entire department whose only job it is is to help parents and families navigate where do they need to go with this need. Once again, if we're not the answer, we'll make sure you get connected to the resources that are most helpful to your family.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I know, speaking of the schools, Kathy Ripman is here. And I know that you have been a big proponent for Children's Home. Is there anything you would like to add, Kathy, about how they interact with the school system here? I know that you had came early on when they were looking for funds, back in probably our twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, and spoke.
Yes, ma'am. We are thrilled to have CHNK in our schools as well as to have one of the residential facilities in Burlington. The staff from CHNK does both IOPs, intensive outpatient therapy, in some of our schools, as well as individual therapy for some of our children who need assistance at the school level and whose parents may not be able to take them to the Children's Home for those services. We've also been able to refer many of our adults who need mental health assessments or need some therapy themselves. We've been able to refer some of our staff there. So, it's been a godsend to be able to work with them.
Thank you. Thanks for the input.
Thanks, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, Mr. Hunt, if you'd like to speak about electric franchises.
Oh, sorry. I'm all around. So, really, you know, you had opportunity to review the lease. I don't know. Let me see. Let me pull that up real quick. I'd already moved on. So, there's eighteen sections of the ordinance. A lot of it, a majority of it, is required legal language. And really, what I hope you take away from it, to really truly summarize it, is that this is just a lease. Imagine a company coming onto your property and leasing a portion of your ground to do business. That is essentially what a franchise agreement is. Happy to answer any questions. I know it's a lot to read through. We're not taking any action on this tonight, so you have an extra week to read up and come to the next meeting with your best question. The one thing I do want to clarify is there was some stuff floating around on social media and in a newspaper. I think there was a headline that said that Florence Electric utility rates will be rising. That is a hundred percent not true. The council will not be imposing a franchise fee. There's nothing about this ordinance that will make it more expensive on the utility provider, resident, or business within the city of Florence. There's no incurred cost or increased cost. And we can discuss this more in detail when we do the first reading.
Any discussion? All right. Next, we have a city initiatives update. Mr. Hunt?
Yes. The phone stuff. All right. If I could turn your attention to the screen. Most of you are aware, we talked about this at the budget retreat. There is money allocated for the next big mural project within the city. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time now. Christian Dallas, which is a local artist around here, I don't know if anybody's been in the CVG. There's about a, probably a three-hundred-foot-long mural that goes through in between where you rent cars and the main corridor there. He wrapped up a few years ago, beautiful mural. We've contracted with him to provide a rendering of what our next mural would look like on the corner or on the side of Stringtown Bar and Grill, which is, I think it's two fifty-five Main Street. So, this is the side of the building that is facing Yule Street. And so, you know, one of the, I guess, some of the things that we advised him that we would like to see there is we'd like to pay homage to Main Street's history. And that's really, there's a lot of little Easter eggs in this, and I'll try to walk you through what that means. So, the stagecoach pays homage to the fact that way back in the day, Florence was the main stop in between Covington and Lexington. So, there was a lot of stagecoaches rolling through. You can't really see it. It kind of looks like a white cat right here. But that is actually going to be a skunk. And that is because at one point in time, a long time ago, and I think maybe Florence's search for its identity, the city of Florence was called Polcat. And Polcat is a slang term for skunk, so there'll be a skunk there. This is probably Florence's most famous resident right here in the green vest, and that is John Yuri Lloyd. He was a famous pharmacist, and he was known for his work on medical botany. So, he used, and that's also why there is mushrooms down here and flowers here. These are things from his book that he had written that he used to make medicine. The cardinal, of course, is the state bird. These lines, which, you know, I'm not very artsy myself, took me a little bit to get used to, but they signify direction and flow. They try to add a little movement to the mural. All in all, we went through three or four different renditions. I think it's very colorful, very neat. I don't know if anybody has any opinions on it. Next steps with this will be, we, our astute city attorney has been working on a licensing agreement. So, it's not as simple as just painting the building, right? We don't own the building. So, we have to get rights to the building that transfer if this owner was to sell or anything happened. We would always have the rights, basically, releasing the side of the building to do this, and we can do maintenance and, you know, be able to take care of it. So, the next step is get that lease signed and then get this scheduled for building prep and paint. So, happy to answer any questions you may have on it.
Josh?
Yes?
If you want to see a bit of Christian's work in real life, Lawrenceburg has a building that's a little bit bigger than this one, right downtown where the music venue is. And Christian did that one for the city of Lawrenceburg. It's about, it's a little bit bigger, not much, but a little bit bigger, so it gives you some perspective of what it looks like.
It is. It's a neat process. If you've ever, if your kids, I don't, are probably too old to do paint-by-numbers. I don't know how long that's been around. But it kind of does just like a paint-by-numbers kit. Everything's blocked off, and then they work on one twelve-inch by twelve-inch section at a time until it's complete. But it's all scaled, computerized, projected, and mapped out. It's a pretty neat process.
Any other discussion? Ms. Chambers?
Didn't Mr. Dallas also do Newport?
Yes, he did.
He did?
He's done a lot of work around the tri-state area.
I just want to say I'm pleased to see this is going to be happening here sometime in the near future. I know the owner, Rick Potter, has been excited and enthusiastic about doing this. And then some people look at the side of his building and the paint's kind of peeling and that kind of stuff. The reason for that is because he's been, you know, we've been planning this for a while. So, we didn't want him to do anything to it because it has to be prepped correctly for the painting to be done. So, it was best to just leave it be. And he has done a lot of work to that building. He removed the, there was a fire escape that used to come down the side. I don't know if anybody remembers that. But it's only been a few years ago that he took the fire escape off the building.
Yep.
So, he's been anxiously awaiting this project.
You're correct. He's been great to work with. And he redid the soffit and the gutters, which really helped with water going down the side of the building. We had some grave concerns about that. And what that would do would have caused the paint to pop long-term, things like that. But he had already had all that taken care of by the time we got to this, so.
Well, and I think that this was something that council had approved, I guess it was
It was two years, yeah.
Previous budget. And the thought was that, you know, we can have every business around, but if we don't have things that celebrate our art and our history and our culture, we've missed the mark as a community. And so, I think this is just one piece to a larger puzzle of bringing more art, public art, to our community and more celebration of our history and knowing where we came from.
Correct. And this is just part one. There is another mural that we'll be doing on Main Street. No renderings to date yet, but as soon as we have those, we'll share it with council.
Do you have any other initiatives you'd like to update us on?
Sure. We've got time. So, I'm pretty sure everybody in this room, at least on council, has, I think, attended the public workshop. And as you know, at the budget retreat, council had allocated over the last two years some master planning dollars to analyze five city-owned properties. That, you know, some of them we've owned for six, seven years. Some of them we've recently purchased within the last year. We had these city-owned properties on the east side of town. What are we going to do with them? So, the city did engage with KZF Design to start looking at what a master plan would look like at these properties. So, I'm going to quickly just run through these. Like I said, most of you have seen them before. The rendering you're looking at now is what is commonly referred to as the Florence Nursery Property. It sits right beside the Ski Senior Center. And what this was originally purchased for, I led the charge on buying this property, the Florence Nursery Property, but it was always earmarked for a new library. That's what council's desire was for, you know, for as long as I can remember. That is still what we would like to see there. And I'm happy to say that the mayor has been leading that charge and having conversations with the library board and the new chair. And there's some positive momentum going on with the new library, and those discussions are continuing on. Hopefully, we'll be able to talk more about that in the next few months. But the front part of this is a new library. There was also surveys that were sent out to the east side or within a certain drive time or walking time of these properties, and we had overwhelming response. One of the biggest responses we had is to expansion of the senior center. So, that's kind of what you see on the, if I can find my mouse here, right here, is the senior center expansion. They'd like more room. They also wanted to see some more amenities in there, whether that be outdoor exercise, kind of like what we have up at on eighteen, or pickleball courts, you know, we could do that there. Botanical gardens would be really, really neat. We just got to work through the long-term maintenance of what something like that would be. There's no programming in place for a lot of these ideas. These are strictly just ideas. Really looking to maximize as much of this property, when you combine it with the senior center property, is right around ten acres. So, it's a pretty sizable piece of property. Amphitheater here, it's a thought. An open lawn, play areas, you know, lots of trails. And that's really, you know, where the concept sits now. We do not have cost estimates. And we'll get in kind of the next steps with cost estimates and what's next with all of these at the end of this. So, that is that one. Directly across the street, you may remember the, if you drive by there now, you're going to see two great big trackos out there and dump trucks, and that is the seventy-four, twenty-four, I believe, and seventy-four, twenty, US forty-two properties that the city purchased within the last two years. Those were just demolished, or they're actually in the process of being demolished. This is about three and a half, four acres of property. And the target with this one is, as we look into subdivisions that were constructed in the sixties and seventies, you know, amenities such as this, playgrounds, open lawn areas, were really an afterthought. And that is detrimental to a lot of the neighborhoods, specifically on the east side of town. So, we want to offer some new amenities here, so that was the focus. Lot, our survey responses, there was overwhelming responses for some sort of dog park or play area, so that's on there. Picnic groves, inclusive play areas, you know, walking trails. There is in the very rear of that property, there's kind of some elevation changes. We'll call it a flood plain, but it's basically an unnamed tributary that can, you know, kind of be swampy back there. So, they analyzed, do you do a bike trail back there? Do you do some sort of skywalk? If we did a skywalk, is there enough buffer yard where it's not interfering with the surrounding residential neighborhoods? Those are all things that we're still looking at. But really, just think a passive-type park on this property. Lastly, or not lastly, for this area of town, this is on Main Street. So, everybody remembers the strip center that was up there, I think it was two-two-five Main Street, probably built in the seventies. The city had purchased this within the last few years and had it demolished. The vision for this was to have, and we get a lot of requests in this city from vendors that want to sell vegetables. They want to sell crafts. They want to be able, they want to have a, I think, Finley Market-type vibe that you can go and set up, sell things, do programming. That's what we're going after this. So, when you see the open-air indoor food hall, that's what that is for, you know, for people to be able to sell vegetables and crafts and do different events in there. Once again, picnic grove and just other programming that kind of builds off the different programming that we think that we can have up there on this property. There's a few parking spaces. Parking has always been an issue on Main Street. We do have a lot of parking on the other end, and parking is another thing that we're looking at holistically. But this will have a few spaces for parking. And then, lastly, it's on here. There it is. So, this is Twenty-One Gerard. And this set of plans is definitely a lot more built out and thought out than the other properties. So, you can remember that count, this is one of the oldest buildings within the city. Great project. We've got a lot of great partners that have been collaborators and contributors to this master plan process. And really, what we're after here is like a true historic preservation project. It was probably constructed in the eighteen seventies, somewhere in there. And the next rendering is kind of doing a little bit better justice. I'll walk you through this. So, as you can see, right now, you just kind of have a set of stairs that go down almost to the street, not ADA compliant by any stretch of the imagination. But it's, you know, a lot of beautification, historical storyboards, cleaning up this side. This is where the historical marker is that we dedicated. I think Pat Wingo ran that project for a few years, finally got that up. But this is really beautifying this whole area in here. Same way with on this side. This side, you do have an ADA access point that you can get around this side of the building. But once again, just lots of landscaping, cleaning up the area. Another shot of all the great things to come. So, one of the biggest issues we have with this project is can we get people into it if they're wheelchair, they're in a wheelchair? Is it ADA accessible? And we were able to achieve that. That's what this, part of what this addition is, is allows for ramp to go down and get into the building. And we have some interior designs of what that looks like. Here's kind of what the inside will look like. So, the goal, there's some modernization to it, but ultimately, we want the outside of this building to look like it did in eighteen seventy with a lot more landscaping and beautification. This is one that there's a lot of federal grant dollars out there, and that we are working with Dr. Jackson, with NKU. And there's people that are experts in going after those grant dollars, probably not a cheap project. Anytime you're doing historical preservation, never cheap. But we will be targeting a lot of grant dollars and working through and trying to come out with funding sources for this project. Where the remainder of these are at is they're generating cost estimates. They're taking the other plans and kind of building them out to the level that you see here. And you probably won't hear much more about it until we get closer to, we start planning. And it won't be too long. We'll be planning for next year's budget cycle. And then we'll be looking at this, how does this fit in holistically with the other parking permits and everything else that we have going on in the city? What's our phased approach to doing some of these master plans and getting them built out? So, that is, in a nutshell, where we're at with all this.
All right. Any questions? Ms. Chambers?
On the church?
Yes.
What do you see that building being used for?
Meeting space is some of the things that we're throwing around on there. It could be a place where, I don't know if museum is the right word. There was a lot of people that talked about doing some sort of museum or paying specific homage to the fact that this is the first African-American church in, I think, Boone County, certainly the city of Florence, and having a lot of those historical documents there. But it would probably be a passive meeting space, I think, is where we're leaning now. But we haven't had those discussions with council and what we want to see there. When you get into trying to keep something looking like it's eighteen seventy, it does limit kind of what you can do with it without modernizing it out. And a lot of it, too, will also depend on some of these grants that we apply for. We'll probably have to have a clear path of what in-use will be there, and they're going to hold that to us as we seek those grants. Do you have, do you have any ideas for what you would love to see there? Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. For the mayor's report, this is the last weekend of the Florence Aquatic Center. It will be open, it will be open from eleven to seven on Saturday and Sunday and on Labor Day. Join us on Saturday, August thirtieth, the World of Golf, for a mini golf tournament and concert. The tournament runs from four-thirty to seven, followed by live music from the What About Jane Band, beginning at seven P.M. City offices will be closed on Monday, September first, in observance of Labor Day. The city of Florence will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September third, at four-thirty P.M. in the council chambers at the Florence Government Center, eighty-one hundred Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-five tax rates on real and personal property. It is important to note that what you see published in an ad is the maximum rates allowed by Kentucky law. City council can and often does set rates below these maximums. For the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, the state requires us to advertise the following maximum rates. Real property, homes, land, and buildings for a dollar eighty-seven per thousand of assessed value. Tangible personal property, that is business equipment and inventory, that's two dollars and thirty-nine cents per one thousand of assessed value. 1,000 of assessed value. And the city of Florence has a unique position that we are allowed to have a special assessment for hazardous duty retirement for police and fire pensions, and that is $1.47 per thousand of assessed value, the maximum rate that would be allowed. These are not necessarily the rates that will be adopted. City council will review financial projections, historical averages, and community act input pact before setting the actual rates, which may be lower. For example, council could choose to set the hazardous duty retirement rate at 44 cents per 1,000. Doing so would reduce the overall property tax rate by about 3% compared to last year, while still funding essential services. At my direction, the fiscal year 2025-26 budget was adopted by city council. It does not include an increase in projected property tax rates, meaning that the property tax rates are not expected to rise. As with any city business, we do ask that if individuals have comments, that they do reach out to our city clerk, Melissa Kramer, and they can do so by email, or they can call the office, and they could ask for special accommodations for this hearing, or they can attend any of our public meetings, including this hearing. The city clerk's phone number is 859-647-8177. The Neighborhood Night Out is Tuesday, September 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Lincoln Woods. Enjoy food, music by DJ Teddy G, and connect with city officials and staff. For more information, contact the administration department at 859-647-8177. The city's Arbor Day will be held on Saturday, September 20th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the Florence Government Center. For details, please contact the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. The Florence Police Department will hold 13 Academy, beginning October 22nd through November 19th. The five-week class will be held on Wednesdays from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The application is available on the city of Florence website. Please contact the Florence Police Department at 859-647-5420 for more information. Is there anyone in council that desires recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? There's no need for a closed session, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Wigo?
Second.
Ms. Chambers? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.